Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning and welcome. Welcome to the Tuesday, September 30th, 2008, special meeting of the Glendale City Council. This is the study session related to Police Advisory Board. Thank you for attending and thank you for watching. Ms. Buchanan, could we call the roll?
Council members Najarian.
Here.
Quintero. Weaver.
Here.
Yusefian.
Here.
Mayor Drayman.
Here. Buchanan, can we hear the item at two?
Do the report. The report first.
Yes.
Okay. The agenda for the September 30th, 2008, special meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, September 25, 2008, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. At item two.
Thank you.
City manager regarding direction from City Council to staff on consideration of a process for engaging the community in discussion of the formation of a Police Advisory Board. At two A is a motion providing direction to staff.
Thank you very much. Let me turn to Mr. Howard. Well, let me turn to the city manager, who I'm guessing is going to point us in that direction anyway. Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, this is a follow-up to your meeting of August 22nd where you had what started out as a discussion of a process for getting input into the possible formation or need of a Police Advisory Board or panel and sort of evolved into a discussion of the merits of that with a great deal of discussion at that meeting. You then held the matter over to today. In the meantime, as you will note from your packets, Chief Adams, in listening to that discussion that took place and taking away both the comments of the public as well as comments of individual council members, has prepared what I would call a follow-up to that meeting and some adjustments that he would propose to make relative to the existing CPAC group. And let me suggest that maybe before you get into oral communications on the matter, we hear from Chief Adams and what he has proposed here in his memo to you.
Chief, thank you for coming and thank you for putting in the time on this. We've had a whole lot of input, some very clear, some sort of nebulous last time around. This is sort of uncharted territory for all of us, so if you could take us through the report, that would be very helpful.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. Based upon the comments that we heard at the first study session, the staff of the department went back and discussed the issues of the desire of the public for additional access and comment and so forth, as well as a number of you voicing those issues. We even talked to the CPAC Committee because we actually had a meeting of that committee, the regular quarterly meeting, last week. Talked to them about some potential enhancements to CPAC. And so I put together this memorandum to you discussing those enhancements. And first of all, what we want to make sure is that we publish the quarterly dates of the CPAC meetings so that everyone is aware of when those meetings are held and add a dynamic to those meetings that the first 15 minutes of those meetings would be open to public comment. And so anyone that wanted to show up and address the CPAC Committee as a whole would have the opportunity to do that. That would be enhancement number one. The second enhancement is to actually create a subcommittee. A subcommittee that we would name the Glendale Police Advisory Council. And in that subcommittee, we would appoint anywhere from five to seven members, existing members of CPAC, to actually six-month terms to sit on that Advisory Council. The Advisory Council would meet monthly over here in the chambers. And the sole purpose of those meetings would be to have them totally open to the public from beginning to end and to take public comments on any issues of concern concerning the Police Department. We would have staff representatives from the Police Department here as well. Any issues of concern that were raised, as far as anything that needed to be investigated from a complaint standpoint, we would certainly launch an investigation. We would deal with that. And then at the quarterly meetings, the Council would report back to the Greater CPAC Committee. And so would the Chief on issues that were raised and what is being done about those particular issues and so forth. So those were the primary enhancements that we were proposing. We were proposing that the Advisory Council would be created for six months to be evaluated quarterly, to make sure that it was serving its purpose and that the community was actually participating and showing up to discuss issues of concern with the Council and that it was time well spent.
And Chief, could I also ask you, if you could, or I don't know whether you would prefer to, or the various alternatives that were presented in the report, specifically as alternative one, two, and three?
Certainly. In a separate document that we provided to you, we talked about if there was a feeling that the CPAC enhancements weren't sufficient or that the Council wanted to go in a different direction, then we provided Police Advisory Board alternatives. And in that memorandum, we basically have three alternatives. Alternative number one was basically to maintain the status quo, which would be really to change nothing and just leave CPAC as it exists and not have any other types of issues raised there. Alternative number two would be to create an ad hoc committee for the purposes of taking public comment. That would be similar to what we are proposing in CPAC with the enhancement of the Advisory Council, but this would be a separate Advisory Council created by all of you. You would propose who the members would be of that Advisory Council and it would be a completely Brown compliant approach. And alternative three would be to establish, you know, an advisory committee that would be an ongoing committee. And it would be something that, you know, the committee would take public comment on issues related to the operation of the Police Department, including the intake of personnel complaints and issues identified by the committee would be referred to the Chief of Police, who would report back to the committee within 60 days of receipt of those issues. Any of these alternatives could be massaged and changed and certainly we could take segments of any of the alternatives and put them together into exactly what you would want if you wanted to create a Police Advisory Board. Our vision for that would be that that particular board would be separate and totally different and independent from anything that CPAC is at this time.
Can I ask you to clarify one other thing? And that is the differences between the changes to CPAC, as you described it, not related to the alternatives that were in the report, and alternative two? Just so I can clarify that in my head.
Primarily, what would be different about alternative two is that is a committee, a blue ribbon committee appointed by you at your direction. And based upon that, of course, either alternative two or three would be a Brown Act compliant body that would have published minutes of the meetings, would actually meet on whatever schedule you set up and would be separate totally from CPAC, wouldn't necessarily report back to the CPAC group. The membership of that committee probably wouldn't be CPAC members unless you chose to find a CPAC member and appoint them to that commission or to that Advisory Board, rather. And our enhancement of CPAC, the way that differs from alternative number two, is all of the members of that Advisory Board are going to be existing members selected from the 25 existing members of CPAC. Five to seven of them would be appointed to sit on the Advisory Council and serve a six-month term before they rotated off. And other members of CPAC were then appointed to serve in that capacity. Just as a reminder, CPAC represents a variety of different organizations throughout the community.
And that's, Chief, to interrupt you, but that was exactly going to be my next and last question for you before I go to my colleagues, was if you could refresh everyone's memory as to where those folks come from.
And I would probably need an actual, I don't know.
I don't even mean the specific organizations, but I mean.
We have, we, there's actually 25 members that are part of CPAC and they represent a variety of different interests in the community. Everything from youth organizations to religious organizations, to neighborhood councils, to the schools. We have both the college president and the school superintendent that both sit on CPAC. We try to make sure that any different organizations, both cultural, youth, and religious within the community are represented in this group so that we have a wide cross-section of the community. And one of the things that we ask, even service clubs are represented, one of the things that we ask is that these organizations nominate two to three people to sit on the Board and then out of those selections, one of them is, and usually their first choice, is selected and backgrounded to sit on CPAC. And the reason for the backgrounding and so forth, and it's just a very cursory background, fingerprints and so forth, is to just make sure that when they are sitting in CPAC and the reason that the whole meetings aren't always open is because some of the information that's discussed in those meetings is of confidential and sensitive in nature affecting the Police Department as far as operations, personnel complaints, those types of issues that's required to be kept confidential.
Okay. Let me go, thank you, Chief. Don't go far, I'm sure there are other questions. Before we go to the public, let me also turn to my colleagues and see whether they have any questions or input or comment before we go to the public. And then, of course, we'll come back and go around again with each of the council members and see where we are. If they have any comments or questions before we go, Mr. Yusefian.
Bullet number three, create a subcommittee. Who does the appointing? The five to seven member?
You're talking about the CPAC enhancements?
Yeah. Who does the appointing of those?
What we were going to, what we were going to look for is to actually solicit volunteers from the entire CPAC membership and then rotate people through that process.
I understand. There are 25 people. Let's say you ask for volunteers and 10 people volunteer. You need only seven. Who makes that decision? You do?
Yes, but we, but our inclination would be to probably take the first seven that volunteered and then the next three that are on that list would be the next three up after the first six-month term.
I'm just trying to get process through my head. So the Council in here will not play any role?
Correct.
On this? Okay. So your alternative, in alternative two, would the Council have a role in it?
Yes.
You're basically creating a blue ribbon committee type of a thing?
That would be a committee that you would be creating as a committee.
And number three is just a regular police commission type of a thing? Is a standing commission, it's going to be continuing type two commission?
Right.
Okay.
It would be of whatever nature.
So the difference between two and three is that the two is going to have a sunset clause in it, which is a time controlled?
Yes.
I see your head going up and down, but the mic's not picking that up.
Quite frankly, I would suggest that anything that is put in place has some type of a review provision or a sunset clause or something of those natures, just to make sure that it is serving the purpose that you want it to serve.
For economic reasons, on two and three, if the Council chose to go in those directions, what the cost will be as far as staffing? All commissions have a certain amount of staffing cost. And also on, currently on your committee, as is on one, what is the staff cost involved on that?
Councilman Yusefian, basically on CPAC, I think that whatever costs were surrounding that would be minimal. There might be some overtime cost if we had to assign staff to attend evening meetings that weren't normally within their schedules, but I think we could even accommodate that potentially with some fluxing of schedules and that type of thing. So I think the cost of the CPAC enhancements would be minimal. If you elected to create your own Advisory Council, then certainly that, making that Brown Act compliant and so forth, we would have to assess where we would find the staff to be able to do that and depending upon the, how frequently that group met and the depth of that group and so forth would probably determine the cost. So I think once that particular model was designed, then, you know, we could certainly report back to you on what we would estimate would be the cost of running that particular Board.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Najarian.
Thanks, Chief. Thanks for the report and the variety of options. Clearly, I think what we have here is, what you've highlighted is that there's a lot of flexibility in where our potential direction could be. But as I was going through these, you know, one thought just kept coming into my mind and that is, let's focus on what we're trying to address. Are we trying to address misconduct within the agency? Are we trying to address community concerns? That, I forget that gentleman's name, said he was harassed by the police and had the camera going. We do get every few months the rare complaint, "You pulled me over because I had long hair" or "because I was driving, you know, at Lincoln" or whatever. Is this, and I think the form of all these different types of committees, whether ad hoc or standing, really, and the makeup, I think really depends on where we're going for this. I mean, in my mind, if there's an issue of misconduct or discipline within the department, we've got the Civil Service Commission for that. I don't want to usurp, create a body that would usurp that authority and perhaps create some conflict as to which group goes where. On the other hand, if we're talking about creating a body where citizens can air complaints and air issues, suggestions, compliments, et cetera, and not feel intimidated by having to come to Council or to your office to express them, I think we need to form a different type of organization with a different composition. So what I'm, and we've had a lot of issues over the past two, three, four years. You know, each, you know, we've had police conduct issues, we've had response to the community issues, we've had charges of discrimination and hiring in cartoons that are prepared. So my question is, to me, where do we want to go? Where's the real focus that we as a Council think we need to go and address? And my answer to that question is, I think if anything, we need to create a body where it is composed of average citizens, not necessarily from the CPAC, because there may be a, you know, a perceived bias or perceived favoritism to the department because they've already been selected in our, in the inner circle, as you said, for certain briefings. But just a group of average citizens who can hear complaints and perhaps from that group, have a chairman come directly either to the mayor or to the chief or to the city manager and discuss some of those items that were raised. And then if necessary, have them brought to the next level of city government, which is either the Council or to administrative level and move on forward from there. So that's kind of where I'm going at this point.
Um, let me.
On an ad hoc basis, I mean, let me add that, not as a standing committee, something that's, that could be, should they get no business in, you know, four, five, six months, then perhaps it's time to disband.
Councilman Najarian, I understand your issue and your concern. We share the issue and concern. There isn't a time where someone brings up a complaint or an issue of the Police Department that we don't launch an investigation to determine the full facts of the issue and to determine whether discipline is appropriate and necessary in those instances. The problem arises basically because of the law and the protections that exist to employees. Many times when you investigate citizens' complaints, you cannot openly discuss the results of that investigation, even when the complaint is sustained and you take appropriate disciplinary action. You can't make that information just generally open to the public and communicate that to everybody and anybody based upon the laws that exist today. So even if we wanted to do that, we can't necessarily do that. So certainly, having a forum to discuss about police conduct and general issues and concerns, we're certainly open to that and ready to entertain that at any time. We try to be as open and transparent as we can on a regular basis with all issues and we would certainly want to do that. But if there is a thought or an expectation that would exist with any type of a Police Advisory Board, that people are going to be able to come in and make a complaint and then there's going to be an investigation, whether it be by us or by an independent hired investigator that looks at it, the rules are the same. Once the investigation is complete, it can't just be brought back and publicly aired to everybody that is out there in the community as to the results of that investigation. And I shouldn't probably be talking about the legal requirements of that. I should defer to our city attorney. But I believe that what I'm raising as an issue is accurate as far as how much can be disclosed. And sometimes people think that with the creation of police commissions or advisory boards or things like that, that all of this stuff can be talked about from beginning to end publicly. And that doesn't even happen with a full-blown type of commission that exists in Los Angeles with a, you know, a police commission. So that was the only clarification I wanted to make so that no one has any confusion about that. And it's not necessarily what everybody might like as far as being open and transparent and so forth, it's just the law of the land.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. I wanted to point out, before we go on, that we went down the line and sort of tried to form a consensus last time we met as to where we wanted to go in terms of this meeting, how we were going to move forward with that first step. And the consensus was primarily, there was an exception to that, but the primary, I think you had four, basically four requests or three requests anyway, to look at CPAC and find a way that CPAC could be open to the public for, as a place for citizens to speak out who might otherwise be, as Councilmember Najarian mentioned, somehow intimidated by going perhaps directly to the Chief or the department or Council. And so there are a number of options here that you've provided as ways that that could work. But I just wanted to, just for the purpose of housekeeping, to remind all of us, that was the general consensus when we left here last time. Let me see. If there are no other questions or comments right now, Mr. Yusefian.
I have a question from the city attorney. My colleague actually said one thing that I wanted clarification on and the issue had to do with if there are performance issues with, let's say, a police officer, the Civil Service basically deals with those performance issues. My understanding is the management basically deals with that. Civil Service basically upholds or declines the discipline that they provided. So the Civil Service, based on my understanding, is, does not investigate anything, does not go out there and perform any kind of a performance evaluation. It's done by the management. And then when that decision is granted, I guess then it goes to Mr. McFaul, who is the next hearing. And if he upholds that, if the police officer does not like that decision, then he goes to Civil Service and the Civil Service either modifies it or says, "I agree with you" or "disagree with you," and the decision is final until it goes to a judge. Am I correct?
Essentially, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Yusefian, essentially you are correct. The Civil Service Commission does not get involved in evaluating the performance of any employee. The Civil Service Commission's role with regard to that is to hear appeals of disciplinary matters, whether they involve anything as high as termination, all the way down to a suspension or time law.
And let me ask you one other thing. If there was a committee created, whether it's for a short period of time or some other way of picking from some group or, as my colleague says, some ordinary citizens, would the Council have an option of what, let's say, Civil Service does, which is all disciplinary actions and whatever is going to take place are not discussed in open session, which means there is an ability for them to go into a closed session? So I want to play this scenario for you and let me know if that can happen or not. The scenario is person comes in and has a complaint about a particular police officer for misconduct in their mind. The committee hears about that. The committee reports to the police chief. Police chief goes back, investigates it, and the result is whether there's some kind of a disciplinary action or whatever. Then the police chief reports back to the committee in the closed session and says, "Yes, we looked into it. This police officer didn't do what he was supposed to do and this is what we have done, but nevertheless, this is closed session, you cannot talk about it." And the same individual comes back next week and says, "You know, I complained and I haven't heard anything." Can the chair at that time turn around and say, "This has been investigated, we have dealt with it, and I just want to let you know, investigation's completed and we have dealt with it and we're satisfied by it." Is that good enough? Can it happen?
Mr. Mayor, members of Council, it can happen only if you vest a committee, if you will, and we'll call it a committee, the supposed committee, for sake, for purposes of discussion, we'll call it a committee, if you vest the committee with the authority to hear those complaints and essentially act on those in closed session. According to the Brown Act, only those legislative bodies that have jurisdiction over the performance of, and in this case, we're talking about the performance of someone, can have a closed session to discuss the evaluation of the performance of a particular individual. You also probably need to exercise some caution that you're not invading the charter-created duties of the Civil Service Commission as well, which deals with disciplinary action. And so there needs to be a carefully drawn line between the two. But in theory, again, without fleshing through the details, the devil certainly knows, it would appear that if properly vested with the authority, a committee could be able to do that. The Chief, by the way, in following up just briefly on what he noted, is correct. There was a recent, somewhat recent in my world, Supreme Court decision, California Supreme Court decision, which caused a number of police agencies who were essentially trying to push the envelope of, some might say transparency and providing more information about police discipline, actually caused them to pull back because of the Supreme Court decision and note that they were no longer going to be providing even minimal information about a specific employee and an investigation of a particular employee, whether it be performance-related deficiencies. The, one particular issue that was involved that caused a lot of consternation was the discharge of firearm. And they were no longer going to be providing that information because of the privacy rights that individual employees have, particularly peace officers. And as a result, there was a number of legislators that tried to scramble, to put together legislation to, once again, try to push forward this notion that maybe this information should get out there and that legislation never got off the ground. And so I wanted to confirm what the Chief said, that there is, there are significant limits to what, whether it's an individual or a committee or a Board of Rights or even a Civil Service Commission can actually state publicly about either disciplinary action or the performance of an individual employee, particularly a peace officer.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. All right. Let's go to our speakers. Let's start with Al Hoffman, followed by Herbert Milano.
Good morning, Mayor Drayman, City Council and staff. Al Hoffman, resident of Glendale. At the first meeting we had a couple of months ago, I, that I was. At the first meeting we had a couple of months ago, I disagreed with a full-out police commission. I think all of you really share that too. I don't think you want a L.A.-style commission, per se. I was slightly misquoted in the newspaper stating that I suggested that the public should go to the civil service commission, which is not the way that works. And I thought about that, and I thought what we need is a smaller-type body that you, the council, would appoint like you do other commissions and review boards and that. And I came up with this idea to make it a regional by geographic in the city, to have a representative from each area in the city on this panel. This would be a citizen. And this panel would, this board would only be called into action based on complaints that it receives from the public. The public would go to this panel, and they would then sort out the complaint so that it would, that would be the investigative kind of thing. They would try to collect all the information and come up with all the data that then, based on their decision, they could go to the civil service commission and say, "This is what happened. This particular person did this and this and this. We substantiated from the public. There's a lot of evidence that says, yes, that person was, did err in his judgment," and they could proceed. We had a block party at our neighborhood a few weeks ago, and the police department, they always support us there, and thank you, Randy, for having that. Always happen. It's always great. They come by. And they did, they were pushing the cops program up in our area, up in Montecito Park. I don't know if there are other cops offices in Glendale. I know the one we have in Montrose. And this person, the officer, was particularly trying to get that office staffed with volunteers so that it can be open all the time. And I thought about that as a means that we could establish these kinds of offices around the city, hoping to get a lot of volunteer support. And people could go there and register complaints, and they wouldn't feel intimidated by anybody. They could go, you know, like one at Maple Park. Somebody go there and say, "Hey, I've had this incident." And now you could call all of the panel together with the people I suggested, somebody representing the police chief, a police union rep, and that. And that's sort of how I came up with this idea, and I thought, well, it would also expand the volunteerism and also provide a service to the council. The only thing the council would be doing here is appointing the members, those five members or six members throughout the city. And that would be their only pointing issue. But then after that, it should run between this part, the civil service commission, the attorney, and the staff and the police chief.
Followed by Reverend.
Good morning, Mayor Draymond, members of the city council. My name is Herbert Milano. As I read the interdepartmental memo by Chief Adams dated September the 24th, and read the introduction, the introduction doesn't state what the problem is, and I think Mr. Najarian addressed it right on. What is the burning issue that is causing us to consider, or causing the city to consider, this particular type of commission or committee? It's a very, very relevant question. And unless we're addressing that, we cannot address whether those problems are institutional-type problems that should be addressed, or they are problems that are of such a pervasive nature that we have to finally come to some type of different structure that will allow us to create something a little bit more significant. What is very relevant to me, especially as, as I think I am a good study of the city, is that this particular commission and the structure that we have has very little transparency. We hardly know of their meetings, when they are held, who's involved, what results have, or what reports are being generated. We know nothing of it. So the question is, would something change that will allow us to get more relevant information in the future under any type of similar type of structure? I think it would have to change for it to be relevant. Now, the city of Glendale's structure has that for Parks and Recreation, which would have less than 10% of the city's general fund, we have a commission. For Fire and Police, which would make up 50%, nearly 50% of the general fund, we have no similar type commission that interfaces between the public and policymaking. And I think it should be looked at in that light, on a structural way which allows the public to bring something to you. Now, the civil service commission is ineffective in many ways, but I think that a commission like this could be justified on those cases where a particular issue goes to court, even after it has gone through the civil service commission, which means that those problems that eventually wind up with a financial loss to the city, meaning that we lose in a court of law, addresses the issue that we have inherent problems that should be addressed on a continual basis. And that alone is sufficient reason to establish one. I would like to address the fact that a commission like this could also address potential problems that we see in other communities. So that if the city of Los Angeles has a major problem, I think it would be reasonable for us to ask a particular department, what policies do we have in place that would prevent us from having the same issue that the LAPD had, you know, with regard to certain events for which they had eventually had lawsuits filed and in which they lost their cases. I would also like to suggest that there may be cases, such as, for example, addressing the issue of police who retire on disability. I looked it up several years ago and found that one out of five did not retire on disability. And that could be an example of the type of issues that the community may have, concerns for which the civil service would not be an appropriate venue. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Roberta Medford. I'm a Glendale resident living in Montrose. Many large cities do have independent citizen oversight and review commissions with authority over police matters. And perhaps it is time that that should be considered for the city of Glendale. We're getting to be a big city with our share of big city problems and issues. So I don't think that that needs to be off the table. We certainly don't need yet another advisory body, given that one exists and that we do have budget constraints. An advisory body would not have been of assistance in a particular incident that my family had with Glendale Police. We were, we directly communicated with the police about the incident, and they communicated back with us. It was effective, if not completely satisfactory in terms of the answers we got. But I wouldn't have wanted to have been chunged off to an advisory group. My next comments have to do with this process. I believe the process of engaging the community in discussion needs a lot of improvement, given the attendance here. More meetings would have to be held. They would have to be held throughout the city, and they would have to be held during evenings and weekends so that working people and students can also participate. Thank you.
Mayor Draymond, council and staff, I'm Sharon Weisman from far north Glendale. And as a steering committee member of Glendale Education Social Justice Advocates, I am aware of some complaints of unequal treatment from, complaints from individuals who perceive that Glendale PD favors certain segments of the community, and these are different segments that have different ideas of which segments are being favored. Our group has formed a subcommittee to explore issues related to the police and oversight, and welcomes the reforms noted in the report to this meeting, to the CPAC. They appear to be a good first step. And going forward, option or alternate two, for an ad hoc committee to see the magnitude of community concern would also be prudent. Obviously, restrictions of public airing of personnel issues need to be observed, and the civil service commission has its role, and that should be left, you know, to do its job. And personally, I would also encourage a proactive approach, more outreach to the various ethnic communities, and especially to schools. Our concern is primarily with schools. And I think restoring the school resource officers is also encouraged, especially to the middle schools, because prevention is always more effective and especially cost-effective than dealing with crime later. And thank you for considering this, and please consider a temporary ad hoc independent review to solicit input from the community. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Sharon?
Ms. Weisman.
I'm sorry. Could you repeat the name of your steering committee again?
It's Glendale Education Social Justice Advocates. Our mission is to support the Glendale Unified School District in providing balanced, straightforward information in a reasonably and healthy learning environment. Our key goals were initially counter-military recruitment to provide alternatives for service for young people. And we've branched out to other issues of social justice involving primarily schools.
So a larger organization that, like that, that is involved in the city issues?
In the city of Glendale? Not that I'm aware of. Many of us also are involved with the Glendale Peace Vigil and the Montrose Peace Vigil. We pattern ourselves after a group called CANZ, Coalition Against Militarism in the schools, that was formed as a subcommittee of the teachers' union in L.A. Unified School District. And we work with that group involved in dealing with military recruiting on the schools and other violence.
Does ACLU have an, have an active group in Glendale?
Yes. We're also, there's, the local group for the ACLU is the Pasadena Foothills Group. And yes, they are also involved. A number of local activists, I know Dick Sealy and Christine Rodriguez are active in the foothills Pasadena ACLU.
And the reason I ask, Mr. Mayor, is I, as I'm looking through, I've been given a list of the organizations represented in the CPAC, and maybe we need a little bit of rabble-rousing in that organization to balance the more liberal and the more conservative viewpoints with regard to community policing. I know you hate me. You're going to shoot me for that, but I think, I think it would, in a general sense, I think your organizations and those like yours play an important part in raising the issues and raising the level of public discourse. And we've got some pretty stiff and stead members on this current list of members, so maybe a little old-fashioned, well, you know what I mean. So I won't say anything more, but maybe we can think about, as we're talking about this, maybe expanding the group to get more discourse within there and more open discussion as to different outlooks on community policing and how the department should be run.
Yes, thank you for considering us. And guess how steering committee would certainly entertain, you know, having a representative on that board. I do have to say, there is also some, a member of our guess how steering committee, Mike Gomez, is, I believe, on that commission, so.
Okay. So we've got them.
We did have some feedback from what goes on at those meetings, and that's why we welcome the opening up of them and additional avenues for that. But, and not that we would claim the rabble-rousing component of that. We'd love to provide alternative views. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weisman. All right. Let me come back to my colleagues and...
No cards?
There are no more cards, Mr. Youssefian. That was the last speaker card. And see where we are, see if there is an interest in the, any of the alternatives listed as alternatives or the CPAC enhancements that are on the front, or some other version or combination. And...
Yes, Mayor, if I can, just to point out a subtlety, but I think somewhat important. As the chief noted in his memo, absent different direction by the council. Randy's intent is to implement the adjustments to CPAC and the formation of the separate, I call it subcommittee, the GPAC Subcommittee to operate the way he's described. So unless there's different direction from the council, we'll take a different course of action. The chief indicated his intent to proceed in that fashion.
Okay. Thank you for that, for that clarification, Mr. City Manager. All right. Let me start at this end. Mr. Weaver, if you have a...
Well, I've sat here 12 years. Obviously, I've seen and heard a lot. Over the years, when I've got complaints about police matters, whether they're from a stop sign violation or meeting police at a residence because of goings-on, I've always referred those emails or letters to the city manager or to the police chief to handle. I would say eighty, ninety percent of the time when people have registered complaints, when you hear the other side from the police, they're correct and the public is wrong. That's just the reality of it. No offense, but it's my own personal opinion. Sitting here, I've heard from maybe no more, being generous, of 10 people out of 207,000 people that want us to change the way the chief has handled his operation. All these allegations of police misconduct and police this and that, it's all phony. Sitting here, we go into closed session, people talk about what we did in closed session. Well, they weren't in closed session, so they don't know. We have to make hard decisions up here, lawsuits, et cetera. This is a well-run police department in the city. For 10 or less people to constantly say, "We got to make all these changes," and here we're sitting in a study session because 10 or less people see as a problem, that's wrong. There's over 207,000 people that think it's good. You say, "Oh, gee, if we had it tonight or at night, then they'd flock in here and crowd the council chamber screaming about the police." I don't believe that. There's nothing wrong with the way the police department operates. There's a mechanism. If Randy wants to enhance his way, fine. But if you start going public and everything, I guarantee you who'll show up at those public meetings to complain. It'll be the same ones that are in here complaining at the podium to us. We're not going to have people flocking down to talk about all the problems with the police. So even if they do, they won't know. It's no different than equating through the economy. 700 billion goes down. Republicans all say, "Oh, no, the public that responds to me don't want it." I don't even know what they're talking about. Meaning, and neither does the Congress. So when the public all of a sudden gets riled up, "Oh, we don't want this, change this," do they really know? When public comes in and says, "We need a police commission. Oh, my God, we got all these problems," they don't know. We're the first line to know if we really have problems. And I personally don't see it. So if Randy wants to hit, it's fine. Other than that, I'm not going anywhere. I won't know on anything else.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Mr. Quintero.
Okay. I'm interested in CPAC enhancements, and I specifically want to make sure that we do have public comment on a quarterly basis and to discuss issues and so forth. In terms of the five-to-seven-member subcommittee meeting on a monthly basis, that's a good idea. However, I am very concerned, and under no circumstances do I want people coming to the podium and talking about individual officers, a quote, "intake of personnel complaints." I am also not interested in a closed-session committee that's going to deal with disciplinary actions. We have a process. We have a civil service commission, and I want to make sure that we maintain the integrity of that system. It's too easy to come to that podium and to start throwing names out and pulling people's names through the mud. And once publicly spoken, that officer will always be somehow under a cloud, let's put it that way. So all comments have to be general in nature. If there is an individual complaint and that person comes to the podium, then absolutely, they can walk right across the street, go to the police station, and file the complaint. Hopefully, they file the complaint before they came to the public forum. But I want to make, make sure that we maintain the integrity of the civil service commission and the general ability for, for the public to voice their complaints through the, through the system. So I think the CPAC enhancement is a good idea. I think we need to open it up to get ideas from the public about patrolling. No one knows the, their neighborhoods better than the people that live there. They know whether the police are being effective. They know what, what in their opinion needs to be done or not done. And so I think this is a very good idea. I think it's going to be a very positive situation for the community in general and will lead to a more effective policing of the city of Glendale.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Quintero. Mr. Najarian?
Yes, I, I think what we need to do, the direction we need to take, is to create
Yes, I think what we need to do, the direction we need to take, is to create an environment or a situation where members of the public can go to a board, quasi-administrative board, and vent and explain what issues they have, whether they're issues for malfeasance with the police department, misfeasance, or to raise issues of, and it's not always, you know, bad police department, bad officer, but also, "We've got this particular problem in this neighborhood," or "We've got this, I have an idea as to how we can better police a certain area of town," or "I'm aware of these type of crimes that are occurring." So it's not always negative input that should be given. I think our community has a lot of ideas for positive enforcement, positive input. So I think, I do agree with the chief's proposal, the, I've got the acronyms messed up, this is the GPAC, chief, the CPAC. From within your CPAC, you're gonna have a elite group, I don't mean elite, but a lucky group.
A Subcommittee.
Subcommittee that will be the front line for hearing these issues and bringing them forth in a less intimidating environment, perhaps than coming before council or seeking a meeting with you or Sergeant Lorenz. I'm all in favor of that. This is a, clearly, I think it's great that we have raised this whole issue, thanks to, I believe, put it on the, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Yusefian, or a combination of the two for bringing this up, and we haven't had this discussion in the city. I think it's an important discussion to realize that there are opportunities for better communication, and at this point in time, with the current situation, I think this is what's best needed for the city. Not to say if the situation changes, whether the department changes or the community changes in the future, that we cannot revisit this and fine-tune our efforts towards letting the, you know, the whole point of this is to let the public know that we, as a city, are responsive to their concerns, whether good or bad, regarding the police department, and we're creating a mechanism, an avenue, for them to express those concerns or compliments, and that this is the best, most efficient, and for the moment, the correct direction to go.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Najarian. Councilmember Yusefian.
I like the second option, alternative to actually, but short of that, I will be willing to go with the chief's opinion. There's one thing that I think my colleagues need to know is, in order to be on the CPAC, you have to go through an extensive background check. A lot of people do not wish to go through that. Also, as I look at the list, there is several groups that are not representing, like the Korean representative is not there, there's a vacancy on Salvation Army, Catholic Charities. I don't know why there's even a one for Police Foundation, to an extent, I would say that shouldn't be there. Also, we need to make sure, which I know, for example, one of the members is no longer there from Red Cross, we need to make sure none of those members are on Civil Service Commission that are on this one, because I think that's some type of a conflict of interest in my mind. But currently, there isn't. There was one, but I guess he's moved on, currently a Civil Service Commissioner, but I think that organization's getting somebody else in his place. Nevertheless, I think if that's what you wanna do, that's fine, I think that's a good first step. To an extent, I must say, in my opinion, I think people know what they want, we are a democracy, people run the government, we work for the people, not the other way around. I think it was democracy that won over this weekend. They basically said to Congress, "This is not what we want," and Congress said, "Fine. You elect us, you tell us what to do." And I was one of those people who said to my congressman, "I don't want it." I think it was a wrong thing. So we don't like this type of process. There are many other countries that you could be, belong to, where words come from above, and there are monarchies, and the king makes the rule. There are different kinds of governments. In this country, we work for the people. I work for the people. Chief works for the people, and he is one of the people, too, and that's the beauty of this country. So for me, at this time, I'm satisfied with what the chief wants to do, that's fine. It's just that I think I would've had to have a little bit of an input on that five and seven. I don't know how we go about that. By doing this, I guess, Mr. City Attorney, this will not require a Brown Act, correct? If he does this?
So far, if the council basically is just noting and filing the chief's recommendation, or it's not even recommendation, what the chief plans on doing, it's just a note and file, "Thank you for the information, chief, that's where we wanna go." My answer at this point is, that's correct. The more the city council begins to try to tinker with this, determine who gets appointed, how the meetings are run, et cetera, then it becomes, the line begins to shift to becoming a legislative body subject to the Brown Act.
And that's the part that I have a problem with. I'd like to have some type of noticing process, so at least people know when the meeting is. When you have a Brown Act situation, you send a notice, people know. I mean, is there a way we can create some of those without making a Brown Act?
I think the chief indicated that there's going to be some kind of quarterly meeting process so that it's gonna be open to the public.
Mr. City Manager.
As part of his plan. As I understand it.
Rising for the same reason the chief is, I think, and that is to say that it's his intent, that for all intents and purposes, it will, it will look like, from the standpoint of public notice and public attendance, as if it were subject to Brown Act. There are the other technical provisions of Brown Act that wouldn't apply, but they'd be public meetings, notice, a regular schedule, and all of that.
Okay. And there'll be minutes.
And agendas and the likes.
Okay. And agendas? He says agendas and minutes are gonna be kept.
I can't be, I can tell you what CPAC already does, and they do keep, and I'm looking at Torta Maranz, I believe I've looked at your book, they do keep minutes, and they have something that can easily be transmitted into agenda.
Well, the chief's comments, when he was speaking, were to publish the CPAC minutes, and CPAC itself, holding the first fifteen minutes open to public input, and then with regard to the Subcommittee, that would be the items here.
Sorry.
Is that correct, chief?
Yes, the Subcommittee, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the Subcommittee, which would be called the Glendale Police Advisory Committee, would actually meet once a month, and we'd probably set a time in the evening, and it would be a regular, like, for instance, for example, Monday night, if the council chambers are available, and we would set it as the same Monday night on a monthly basis, so that people would know about it, it would be regularly communicated, it would be, you know, published, so that folks would know that they could attend during that period of time, and then they would show up to address the council with any issues or concerns that they had, and we would certainly have police staff here as well to listen to those issues and certainly take notes and so forth when appropriate, and also, when appropriate, to initiate the appropriate investigation to handle any type of a complaint that might arise out of that type of setting.
Okay. That answer?
Yeah, I mean, if that's gonna happen, then I'm fine.
Okay. All right, for my part, I am pleased with the suggestions. I think that it is a good step, and what I, one of the things I like about it is that we're gonna look at it, we have the opportunity to look at it again in six months and see, are we getting input, or are we not? Or is something else required, or is nothing else required? I just wanna also go on the record, we're talking about, some of the kinds of issues we're talking about aren't necessarily the big controversial issues that sometimes come to this diastere in council meetings, where you hear about large, big accusations about all sorts of skullduggery and conspiracies and so on. Sometimes they're just the quality of life issues that ordinary residents, I mean, that, I don't know about my colleagues, but that is by far the largest number of contacts I get during a month from people that have questions about police issues. It's things like, you know, can you clarify issues with regard to speeders, or we have people speeding in our neighborhood, or, you know, at a certain corner, there's, you know, it's when kids are crossing there because they're going to school, and, you know, can we get more enforcement there, how does that work? Or ticketing issues, you know, "I got a ticket, and I think it's an unusual issue, and other people are probably gonna get ticketed, too, and what's the policy?" Or, as Mr. Hoffman raised, the issue of the cops programs, how does that work, and, you know, how can we get one in our neighborhood? Be able to explain that the cops, that office that Mr. Hoffman's referring to in Montrose, for example, is not paid for by the police department or the city. It's a private organization that puts, that pays for that, pays for the rent, pays for the utilities, and so on. How that could be worked out in another neighborhood that might want that. Police policy questions, hey, why do the police do this, why don't they do that? You know, one of the biggest questions, I guess, why is it when the police park their cars, the engines are running? Why is that? You know, these are questions that, they're not always the big, you know, shoot-'em-up questions, they're just quality of life questions, and our citizens have them. Or, as Mr. Hoffman provided with his write-up, ideas for new policies and programs. And sometimes people are, as Mr. Yusefian said, are intimidated to, or Mr. Najarian, rather, intimidated to come here in this format, to do that, or to go to the police department, or go to the chief directly. So I think this is a good first step, and I think that the fact that we can look at it in six months and see where we are is another very good thing to do. I like the idea that we're gonna be publishing minutes, that we'll be noticing, that both groups will now be open and available to the public, and one of the reasons that is important is because when I made notes about the consensus of my colleagues from the last meeting, that was one thing that everybody wanted, that no matter where we went with this, that CPAC itself would have some ability to hear from the public. That was sort of the big revelation at the last meeting, was that either people didn't realize there was a CPAC, or if they did, they didn't know that they couldn't be heard there. So that's a big improvement, and we'll see where we are. As far as I'm concerned, the list of CPAC members is pretty broad. I'm familiar, not familiar with all of the names here, but the ones I am familiar with, I see a very broad spectrum and range of viewpoints, just from the names I know, and they run the political gamut from left to right, and conservative, to liberal, and everywhere in between, so that's good. And, chief, how, what would be the process for a citizen to approach you and say, "You know what, chief? I belong to an organization," or "I believe you've missed an organization that we'd like to see added here." You know, Councilmember Najarian was talking about other groups who, who, I wouldn't say necessarily rabble-rousers, but might have a completely non-traditional view, that would like to see their representative counted in the number here. How would they go about that?
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, any organization that's interested or feels that they aren't represented in CPAC, they could certainly either call us or drop us an email, tell us a little bit about their organization, that type of thing, and if there is a way that we can help include that organization, CPAC, we're certainly open to doing that. You know, the design behind CPAC is to be, again, as open and transparent as possible, but because of the sensitive nature of some of the things that are discussed, the meetings in totality are not open to the public, but in some sense, they are, they're open to all the representatives, and those representatives are really representing the public. That's the whole design behind CPAC, is that they represent a vast cross-section of the community for the purposes of bringing forth information and concerns and that type of thing from the constituencies that they are representing on CPAC. So we hope that that will continue. Councilman Yusefian is correct that they are backgrounded. He used the word extensive. I'm not sure I would characterize it as extensive only from the standpoint that we, the basic background is a fingerprinting, and we run to make sure that there aren't felony convictions and that type of thing for the people that sit there. When I use the word extensive, I look at the background that's done for a police officer or an employee of the police department, that's a big, like, three-ring binder that looks at everything.
Their backgrounds that thick?
They're pretty big.
Oh, my God.
'Cause it looks at finances, it looks at prior employers, it looks at neighborhood, all that kind of stuff. We don't do that with CPAC members. We just basically, we do fingerprint them and run their fingerprints through the system. That's about the extent of the background. So it's not maybe as extensive as some folks might think, but certainly, if somebody's gonna be a member of CPAC or wants to be a member, and they don't want that limited-type background done on them, then that might not be the right choice for them, but.
So, but in general, if there are organizations out there that would like to be, talk to you about being included, there's a way to do that. There's a process, or they can see you, or talk to Sergeant Lorenz, or someone, and say, you know, "Our organization has an interest in the community, and we'd like to be considered to be a part of this," or.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, absolutely. We'd be very happy to hear from any organizations that feel that they're not represented and might like to be considered for representation on CPAC. The other thing that I just want to remind the public about, certainly, any time there's an issue or concern about a neighborhood issue or problem or whatever, you know, we are in the electronic age, they can drop us an email, we get emails from across the community on a regular basis concerning specific issues. We do respond to all of those and act on those, and a lot of times, we will try to nip a problem in the bud before it becomes a major issue, so we're certainly open to that. My email address is, first initial, R.Adams@ci.glendale.ca.us. So any time people send us issues that need to be looked at or examined or ideas, we monitor those, we look at them, we assign them to the appropriate division on the department to act on them, and we try to be as responsive as we can to any issues affecting the community.
Well, chief, you're aware of an issue that came up in my neighborhood the other night, and that would be a perfect kind of issue to bring to a, to this kind of a meeting if I were someone that didn't know how to go about it. You don't view it as specifically a police issue, but that would be a good venue to start, as an example, so, anyway. Mr. Yusefian.
I'd like to ask the chief a question on, how long before you implement all of these? When would be the first meeting of the CPAC, and when would be the first meeting of your new Subcommittee?
Councilman Yusefian, we just had a meeting of CPAC, so we'd probably have another meeting of that within the next three months, but as far as starting the Subcommittee, we did talk to them, there was interest, and we would commence putting that together right away. So I would think that within a month or less, we could have the first meeting. What we would like to do is establish, we need to check on the nights of availability of the council chambers. I believe we were told that Monday night is the best night not to conflict with any other activities that are in here, so we would probably select that night and a particular time and publish that and try to get that going right away.
All right. And as you put this together, I hope you would keep in mind to have a balance of the organizations and the makeup, so it's not, you know, one group of people get all the representative and the other group don't have anything to say, so. And my understanding is this is not televised, correct?
That wasn't our intent.
Right. I just wanted to.
I would like to echo that, to the extent that it is possible you could end up with, just by luck of the draw, you know, people that are available might be all Chamber of Commerce or Merchants Association folks who, you know, it would be nice to have a, sort of, a mix of outlook and view and expertise. Anyway, all right, thank you, chief, for being open to the conversation, both prior to going down this road and since we've been on this road. I wanna thank the public for bringing their views in to the extent they have or have been able to. I wanna also thank my co- I wanna also thank my colleagues, because there's a wide variety of views up here as well. Why are we even talking about this? Do we need to? Should we? We should. There's a whole mix of ideas, but I think in general, I think this is a good way to move forward, move the ball down the court, down the field, and see where we are in six Housekeeping, Mr. Howard.
The motion to adjourn at this point in time, I would recommend that no motion regarding what the chief is planning on doing, consistent with his report, be made, given whatever.
So move to adjourn? Move to adjourn.
Motion is second, we are adjourned. Thank you.